What? No. Yes. I'm in a meeting, Jack.
Okay.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Um. So, thank you very much for your response to the, uh, to the committee's questions which we received ahead of time. Um, I'm gonna suggest, uh, for the purposes of moving the material, because we have a lot of it, um, that we start with question four. Since question one requires looking at a separate document as the second of question two. Three is really a background question about what your department does on school-based health centers. So before we move to number four, does anyone in the committee have a question about one, two, or three that you would like to ask before we move to the fourth question? Okay, number four then. Uh, which is, um, the status of mobile dispensing unit regulations.
Would you like me to give an overview of the status?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for, uh, mobile dispensing units, uh, we have drafted policies and procedures that have been in development with multiple sister agencies, including Demus, DSS, and DCP. And, um, we submitted these policies and procedures during the week of March 6th. Um, these are currently pending approval at OPM. So, once, uh, these policies and procedures are approved, we'll be able to share them, uh, more broadly. And these really follow the DEA rule-setting requirements of these types of facilities. So they're very much in line with that. And just to reiterate to everyone that any municipality that has such a type of facility that, uh, wants to open must work with the municipality in which it is opening. So it needs to follow rules and regulations that, uh, municipality may have. And, uh, we are certainly, uh, up to the point where we are being able to have a process for DPH's portion of these mobile dispensing units, which include covering vehicle and program specifications, as well as contingency planning, record-keeping, and diversion measures for any of these types of medications.
Um. Commissioner, if I remember correctly, there were some questions about, since it's pending approval, you may not want to go into detail, but I believe there were some statements during our meetings about, or questions about where they would be located.
Uh huh, and that's why I brought up the part about, you know, what local jurisdictions' rules and regulations may be on this type of issue, because what DPH's purview is to specifically comment on what the vehicle needs to be like, what the program specifications are, contingency planning, record-keeping, diversion measures. Every state agency has a different piece of this, but the exact location is really up to a municipality to determine, because every municipality may have different laws in place on that aspect of it.
So, if there wouldn't be any broad policy on how far a dispensing unit should be from a school, for example?
That is not part of what DPH's authority is in this.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions on this? Yes, Senator. Welcome, Senator.
Hi, yeah, I didn't go to the other meeting, too many meetings, it's just too much. Um, hi, Commissioner, it's great to talk to you finally, yeah.
Yes.
The, are these methadone? Just, just tell me what this, okay, so. I mean, this, we're not debating methadone dispensing units right now, but I, I remember hearing the question, and I didn't really understand where the question was coming from. Um, if we are supposed, so I am a visiting nurse, and there are many, many days that every single one of my clients is going to that methadone clinic. Um, in the mornings, you can only go in the morning, and the stress in some of the families, I will sit there with three generations, and grandpa is sick, and the kids miss the bus, and somebody else has to go to the methadone clinic, and if they don't get there by so-and-so, but somebody has to go with grandpa to the emergency room, because Nurse Marks is sending him to the emergency room, and it is chaos. And I just, I, it blows my mind. And, um, I, I've said a million times, I don't understand why we can't bring home more, um, methadone, but that's a whole, that's like federal, and that's a whole nother subject. If our whole point is, believe me, the kids know that mom and dad are on methadone, or grandpa, or auntie, and if our whole goal in life is to take away the stigma of, um, of, uh, this terrible epidemic, to make it that it is just a disease, then, you know what? You're walking your kid to school, and then you get to walk around the corner to get your methadone? Darn, I think that's pretty awesome. In, um, the town where I live, New London, we have so many schools that it would be really hard to have, uh, a clinic not too hard from the schools. These aren't drug dealers. These are people dispensing medication, and if you could go get your diabetes insulin at a mobile unit, everybody would think that was terrific. So I know what I'm saying right now is very controversial. I just had to say it's because I have heard this question in a few different things, and I just thought it was time I give my little lecture, or whatever, my pontification on, on what I think about this.
Well, and, thank you, thank you, I, I don't know if the committee wants it, but, um, I think, uh, Representative Walker's district, uh, and Representative Condalera's district have been the source of some controversy, because one of the providers, uh, has not taken responsibility for the perimeter outside, and there's a lot of drug dealing. And, um, and, uh, this goes back to another mayor, this is royal bond for years. And, uh, and I'd actually attended some of the community meetings, so I don't know how, I, I do believe, and I'm trained in epidemiology, that, that, um, that one test of public health has to have something to do with public acceptance. That doesn't mean that you do stupid things. It does mean that you need to be respectful of community values, and, and I think that's where the question was going. Although I, I don't want to speak for Representative Walker, um, but I, but I do live in the same town, and I'm, I've attended some of the meetings, so I, I know that this will come back, uh, Commissioner, and, and so, thank you very much.
If I, may I follow up with just one, uh, comment? Would that be okay?
Sure, yeah.
I, I just want to thank the Senator for her comments. Um, I also just want to say that the example of how in New London, if DPH were to say you may not have such a unit within X miles of a, a state, of a school, it would be very, very challenging. That's why we really do need municipal oversight for those types of questions.
Right, no, I don't, I don't even know if that's the example I would use, but I was just trying to give an idea, and I don't know how you build community trust, and how you reduce that through a regulation. Well, I do know how you build community trust, but, but, um, it's not there, so, so, uh, I think that's where the question was going, and, and, uh, are there any other questions or comments on this? Uh, number four? Okay, thank you, Commissioner, next.
Okay, I believe the next one was on, um, diversity of the licensed behavioral health professionals and, uh, utilization of state licensure reciprocity. So, um, two things that I want to mention here are that, in terms of our licensing, we do have the ability to renew licenses purely online through e-licensing. And many providers utilize this, but many of our seasoned providers that may have been licensed for many, many years, and may have been licensed, you know, through the old system before the early 2000s, continue to renew their licenses on paper. And in those paper documents, we don't often capture race, this is race and ethnicity data, because it's historical, and they may not have updated it in those paper documents. But with that caveat, what I would say is that if we look at an analysis of 11,515 licensed social workers, what we can share around ethnicity is that 16% are Hispanic, 68% are non-Hispanic, and 22% ethnicity was not available. And then in terms of race, we have, uh, less than 2% Asian, 13% Black or African-American, 65% white, and then 17% race was not available, and 4% were listed as other. The other thing I want to highlight was the question of state reciprocity. So, as you recall, last session, it was passed that if you have a license and are in good standing in another state for at least four years, you would have a fast track to licensure in the state of Connecticut. And this was implemented in October of 2022. And so particularly in behavioral health specifically, we have had 4,149 new licenses since October. I think, um, that is pretty good, uh, in terms of, that have been issued for the state of Connecticut. And out of those, 335 have been specifically for behavioral health practitioners.
Thank you, any questions? Representative McCarthy, review?
Yeah, thank you, and, and just really to the Commissioner, thank you for providing all of this really detailed information, it's a lot of work. Um, and it's wonderful to hear about how many, uh, exchange we've had with reciprocity, with licensing. Can you just say which, is there a preponderance of, of states that are used here? Uh, any state in particular that we're seeing more reciprocity? Close by, or, or, just curious?
Yeah, I would say that in general, close-by surrounding states are the more common, but I'm just looking, and, because I do want to take a moment just to thank the DPH team, who really did gather all this information. Um, but I'm just looking at the list of people that we've got on the call right now. Um, and I don't know if, I don't see Chris and Drayson on the call, but I don't know if anybody else can answer more specifically about the specific states that have the highest numbers.
Commissioner, we'd have to get back with, uh, we can, we can look that up and get back to the committee with, um, a table.
Yeah, I was, I was just curious, and I know because this reciprocity between states is really helping fill some of that void now, and we're doing the same thing in education, um, so I, I'm very, and thank you again for the detail.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on this particular response? No, um, thank you, Commissioner, number six.
Okay, so for number six, this was about, um, reimbursement rates for ambulance providers. So I just want to highlight, um, the rates of increase that we were able to identify, where you can see clearly there's been a rate increase every year since 2012. So we just went back to the last 10 years. Um, and you can see the percentage increase that has been there for each year over the last 10 years. Uh, in terms of, uh, you know, additional language, we look forward to working with the LCO and with you in terms of language that you'd like to propose, so that we can work on coming up with an agreement on what would be able to satisfy, uh, your request.
Is, are there other questions to that this response? Senator? No?
I'm sorry, I, I, what was the, I, I was, what was the question? I just came from a CIF meeting. What was the, what was the question, again, um?
It was, uh, reimbursement rates for private ambulance providers.
Oh.
The response is number six on the material we have.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Sounds good, now I know we're all running around. Thank you. Um, next, thank, thank you, Commissioner, next.
So number seven is about the fetal, uh, I'm sorry, uh, correct my, uh, statement, it's the infant mortality review program. So the infant mortality review program is one that'll examine infant deaths in the state. Really, the goal here is to reduce disparities, identify gaps in care and services to, uh, pregnant persons during pre-partum care all the way through delivery. And, as you know, we have a maternal mortality review committee that currently is in existence. The infant mortality review committee will mirror this, uh, mechanism, and we will conduct these reviews to be able to come up with public health interventions that should hopefully be able to reduce infant mortality going forward.
Uh, Commissioner, will this include chart reviews?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a program, and I think the OSA was laughing about it, called the fetal and infant mortality review, which I actually used to attend the, the rounds, uh, of, uh, and, uh, it was, the plug was pulled on it by OPM, and it turned into a, a kind of a raucous argument, um, uh, but anyway, they, they pulled the program. Would it sort of go along those lines? Uh, or how would it be different?
So, I wasn't around at the time when that committee existed, so I do know some of the history around that particular committee in the past. What I can say going forward is that we do really want to embrace the success of the MMRC and fashion this EMR, or infant mortality review committee, on the successes of the MMRC, and be able to make it something that is much more productive in terms of our public health goals going forward.
Okay. Yeah, I was surprised in some of the cases that nobody was looking at the father. Uh, so that, just, just, that would be a side conversation, but yeah.
So, one of, yeah, sorry, I was just gonna say, part of the establishment of this would be to set up exactly what would be reviewed, what data would be reviewed, how it would be done. You know, have a nurse consultant who'd be able to examine that, and really compare what we will do to other states that have been doing this for a long time as well. And be able to use best practices in other states to bring them here to Connecticut as well.
Okay.
If I, if I, if I may just ask, the-
Yeah, Representative.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, I noticed there will be a summary report that will be submitted, uh, after 90 days of the meeting. Would, uh, the, excuse me, Public Health Committee, uh, be able to monitor to see how, how the committee is working, and that results of the summary report?
How, uh, the results of the report, so, yes, I, I currently, I, I see, I believe that Paul, um, Gasek and Mark uh, Keenan are on the call as well. Um, currently, these are sent to me, um, uh, via email right now. Uh, but we would be happy to, um, you know, share sort of summary findings. Uh, the findings that are shared with me are usually, uh, are de-identified, so there's no, you know, identifiers in the reports that are sent to me, and we'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank, thank you for that, thank you.
And, thank you for that question, Representative. I can think of three or four of our members, including myself, who have been long, very interested in this topic, and I think it's, it's great to talk about sharing the information, it's good, thank you. Uh, Senator McCrory, did you have a question? I see your hands, yes.
Is it up? My hands up? Is it up?
You seem to be waving. You don't have a question?
No, not necessarily, but I, I, my comment would be infant mortality rates, we know historically they've been terrible in the Black and Brown community. Maybe, this is, this is not something that we need to go out and do another, I think, I think we should, go out and do another report, I think that's fine. But we know this, this already. What are we doing currently financially, or programs that we're supporting to try to eliminate, that, eliminate or that there's disparities in infant mortality rates? The reason I ask, I was thinking about doing a forum with some, some people came to me and asked, hey, we gotta shine a light on this, because it's, it's really bad, and I don't think people lot know about it. And I was gonna try to do something before the session got started. But I do want to do something around that. What are we currently doing to reduce that disparity right now?
So, Mark Keenan, do you have any, uh, specific programs that you could highlight in terms of addressing this? I can definitely say we're certainly looking to identify specific places that we should be doing things, as you mentioned, this is a long-known disparity. Uh, Mark, do you have anything else to contribute?
Right, right, so this is a great opportunity, this, uh, this, this new program to pull together, like, all of the disparate pieces of what people are working on, both through, like, mental health initiatives, through school-based health centers, is a, you know, is a part of that. Um, uh, working with the, uh, the Office of the Child Advocate, who does a review of, of child deaths. Okay, and really coordinating, um, uh, what the programs are working on here. Uh, this will be, you know, this particular one will be for, for infants, uh, to 12 months of age. Um, it will, it will work off of what the maternal mortality review committee is, is doing, you know, as well, as identifying exactly, uh, what the disparities are, and getting, getting a real, getting a real comprehensive report, and get real comprehensive surveillance and monitoring of exactly, uh, exactly where the interventions need to happen. So this is an opportunity to pull it all together.
I guess, I guess my question is more aligned, we know it exists. We don't know, I don't need another report. What are we doing about it? Or if we don't have a program in place now, let's work together to identify a program, or program, or organizations that's gonna do something about it. I don't need to know that, you know, what we're working on, what we're gonna write in a come-out report.
Right, the ultimate, the ultimate goal is to make recommendations, to make, make substantial recommendations, and for agencies and for legislators to take action. Uh, very specifically, and, and that's exactly what has happened with the MMRC, is recommendations have gone forward to, to address physician training, um, to address, um, expanding Medicaid coverage. So, so many substantial recommendations have come out already in the couple of years that MMRC has been going. And we would imagine that this would be, it would be a program mirroring that success.
Um, Senator, could I add a, a question?
Yes, sure.
To your first comment, um, we, we do have a program, uh, that provides WIC vouchers, uh, for fresh produce in our markets, that's done partly through the Department of Agriculture. And during the, um, during the pandemic, the, the up participation in that program, and actually before that, was not as strong as it was in, in the, um, in the senior program, for example. And it would, I think it would be great, because I think the Ag Department has been very proactive in wanting to help, uh, when there's a need to, it's good for our farmers, uh, to, uh, if we could just think about the role of nutrition in prenatal care.
I, I, I think that's important, I think a WIC program is good, but I think this is deeper than a, a, a WIC program. I think it's, I think it's, I think we got, by providing a WIC program is good, but I think that's just scratched the surface. So therefore, I, I know I'm gonna have to do this, to find out more if, um, the issue around infant mortality, as it applies to disparity, and then we have to come up with resources to go after it, that's all, that's why I asked the question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Uh, Senator Austin?
Uh, thank you very much, um, so I was, are you going question by question, Madam Chair?
Yeah, um. Apparently not, if you're asking the question.
I, I'm curious, only because, um, I had asked a question, I was just curious. You know, I don't see it in there, but I do appreciate the private provider information that was, um, uh, put forth. I still think the rates are too low, but, um, and I'm working on the language, and I appreciate the, um, email that I got that uh, said that you would want the LCO to draft language, and then you'll look at it, so I'll see if I can get that done today. My, my other question that I had, Madam Chair, was relative to a bond that had been put out, um, and was being handled through the Department of Public Health. And I didn't know if the Commissioner knew where that was, I heard from the people just, just two days ago, and they have not heard from anybody at DPH, and that bond went out a few months ago. So do you know who from your agency would I, uh, get in contact with to find out when they will be talking to the community to work on the contract?
Senator, can you specify which bond, because we've got several different bond funds that are going out?
It was for the Carefree Association, it was a million dollars for a community to replace their community well.
To replace their community well, okay, um.
It was, we, we actually talked about this when you came down to Groton one time.
Yes.
And I was working on it back then, and then, um, I brought it up last time, but it's Carefree, is what it is. If you, if you want to get back to me on that, so that you don't have to-
I believe that Lori is on the call, uh, Lori, if, do you have follow-up on that specifically for the Senator? Okay, maybe Lori is not on the call, we'll have to get back to you, sorry.
Um, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator, we began at question four before you arrived, uh, because, um, the number one was a list of projects that they were required reference to another. Generally speaking, we are going question by question.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, I was just trying to get myself situated in where you were, thank you, appreciate it.
So we wouldn't be lifting, reading a list of all the, uh-
I totally agree, totally agree, thank you.
Uh, Senator Mark?
Um, thank you, Chair, through you, I'm going back to the infant mortality, um, um, discussion, um, Commissioner, and I do agree 100% with Senator, um, McCrory, that we, we have numbers, we have evidence, but I know we have to do more studies. But yesterday in public health, we had fantastic testimony about starting a universal nurse program for, um, people after postpartum, and some people also, um, you know, at the end of the pregnancy, to see people before they deliver. Um, I, I've done this work before, it's, it's such fantastic work, we have the numbers. The numbers prove that it decreases C-sections, the numbers prove that it decreases postpartum depression, that it, um, improves kids getting into school, like, it proves every single thing, every single number that it proves is things that all of us so want for our constituents. So I, I hope that, that we get that, um, money into our budget, I'm not sure where we're gonna find the nurses. Although, you know what, I, I bet we'll find the nurses for this program, because it's such, uh, a, um, a rewarding, um, such a rewarding nursing, and it's just, you, you can really do nursing the way you want to do nursing, um, without somebody standing over you. So, I, I just want to make sure everybody does know about this program, Commissioner Bai spoke about it yesterday in public health, and it is so important, and that, maybe we could take the money from another program, and another study, and just, we have an answer, let's put it into something that there's a really good answer.
Uh, Senator, you talked about the program that's based on the pilot in Bridgeport.
Yes.
And, and it is astonishing to me that we are discussing something they've been doing in England since they established the National Health Service after World War II. But, but that's a whole other conversation. Uh, yeah, that sounds great, it's just so obvious.
May, may I make a couple comments on that one, would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay, so I just want to, um, clarify that, um, the, you know, so the Universal Nurse Home Visiting Program and Community Health Worker Partnership is something that we, as five different sister agencies, have been working on for a year and a half to get off the ground, that pilot in Bridgeport, it's part of the Governor's maternal health bill. It is currently being funded, we have funding right now, in part through a CDC grant that DPH has, is, you know, putting towards that in OEC, in part through ARPA funds, so it has funding in the short run. Down the road is where the question that you're raising, Senator, it will need to be addressed. But at least for the current budget, it is funded to be able to get started in the way that it's proposed. The other thing, just to Senator McCrory's question before, there are so many pieces of the maternal health budget, including doula certification, including- including doula certification, including birth centers, which increase access for all Connecticut residents, rural areas, urban areas, but also do address issues of ethnic and racial disparities. And we have multiple different things in the Governor's Maternal Health Bill that specifically address issues of maternal and infant mortality. With the interventions that we know, these are things we are proposing and bringing forward in this maternal health bill. So I would just encourage you to strongly look at that. And, you know, we've given a lot of thought to the components of that maternal health bill, which are, and the Infant Mortality Review Committee, which is part of that maternal health bill. The reason that we need to do that is we are putting forward so many different initiatives with data that we already have, ready to go, boots on the ground, universal nurse home visiting, doulas, other things, birth centers, where we know we can make a dent in that. But you need to keep studying and evaluating it going forward too. So it's not an either or, it's a but and, you know, it's, it's a what can we do and, you know, we're putting forward all these initiatives in the maternal health bill. But in tandem, we need to set up this committee to look at what is going to happen proactively as well. So I would strongly ask for your support on both initiatives because that's really the way Department of Public Health is going to be able to advance creating access and opportunity for birthing people in our state, for children who can also get some, you know, so that, that postpartum care, right after that initial period of birth, whether it be in the birth center or whether it be with universal nurse home visiting, is going to be critical to helping prevent infant mortality, maternal mortality. These are known interventions that can be implemented now.
Can I, can I ask, what we call a commission in maternal health bill, you guys have a maternal health bill for, up and coming for this session right now?
It's a Governor's Bill. It's a Governor's Bill. Yes.
What's that bill number?
I think it's 986.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Yes. So that we had a press conference on it yesterday. I testified on it in public health yesterday. So those would be other places that, you know, for more information on it, if you'd like to hear about it. We had a licensed nurse midwife, Lucinda, who is very eloquent on this topic and specifically addressing issues of disparities for Senator McCrory might be helpful.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
There's a lot of interest and experience in that topic, so I look forward to a lot of questions. And thank you, Senator Mark, for bringing that up, and Senator McCrory for challenging everybody. Yes. Next, number eight. Commissioner?
Okay, yes. On number eight, this is a detailed question on budget of our Office of Injury and Violence Prevention. We provided a large table on that. Do you want me to go through specifics on that table or does anybody have questions regarding the material?
The person who asked the question is here. I do know that for many years, that department was prohibited from doing any, any research on gun violence because of Congress. And I know the, the people there who did an outstanding job during those years, a lot of what they did was involved violence against women. And, and so that even though the, the data was mandated 30 years ago, the, the actual activity that I was closest to, but I wouldn't, I'm sure there's things that we don't know, that I don't know, involved collecting information about sexual assault and domestic violence and, and helping us to connect with the federal government on that. Am I correct in that, Rachel? Rachel?
All right. Can you repeat the question?
But I made a statement that it was my impression in the years that that department, that, that office was not involved with gun research, that there was a lot of activity in sexual assault and violence against women, that they were doing a lot of data collection and, and helping to draw down dollars on that. Is that true?
I think that the Commissioner can speak more to the activities of the office. But my understanding is that there injury prevention and violence prevention has included always homicides and, and gun violence. I don't know if it would be as comprehensive, it's certainly not as comprehensive as will be included under the Governor's Budget with the Office of the Gun Violence Prevention and Intervention. But there's always been a component of that under the office.
But, right, but, but we could not fund research into guns because, there's the person who asked the question. There we go. Julian, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you so much. Sorry, I was off camera. No, I just want to thank the department. This chart is very helpful. In looking at the table, that explains the different grants, which again is very comprehensive and very helpful. Is there another question, though, that does answer when the money has been distributed? Because that is part of, and I know we discussed the issue with the contracting and that you all are working to improve that. But is there anywhere on here or in this answer that explains when the money is, has actually been distributed or if it's been distributed?
So specifically, not specifically on the new ARPA money on gun violence, you're talking about existing relationships. That's what you're asking about, correct?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm jumping. So I'm actually looking at, like, for example, rape prevention education. So the money to, let's say, the Connecticut Alliance to End Sexual Violence. I see that, like, one of the amounts is $608,93, and that the time period is July 22 to June 27. When, when is that actually distributed and has it been?
So I think Michelle Shot or, Michelle, would you be, do you have that information readily available to you?
So we can get, not readily available for the specific contracts, but if you want to, we can get it for all the contracts. Or if you want to highlight a couple, we can get you that information.
I wonder if you could provide for the committee whether the money got out the door?
Sure, for each specific contract? Okay, sure, again.
And, and through the committee administrator?
Yep.
Yep, as always. Representative Gilchrist, did you have another question?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, great.
Representative Dylan, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm just using my hand here. I'm sorry.
Okay.
May I just ask very quickly, I too want to thank the department for the chart on the grants and really outlining where the federal dollars are and the state dollars in comparison. But on some of the programs, I noticed other agencies are doing similar work. And is the department, for instance, on the suicide prevention program, is there any interaction with the Department of Education on that initiative or, or not?
So, yeah, so in terms of our suicide prevention work, you know, I, I believe you're looking specifically at our block grant funding. Would that be right? Is that the one that you're asking about?
Yeah, yes, the federal grant, yeah.
Yeah, that federal grant. So I, I guess what I would ask is, Mark Keenan or anybody else that you want to tap from your group, is there, do we have a specific interaction with STE at all on that block grant funding? I, I don't believe so, but I don't, I'd rather ask them to confirm.
It is, it is organized through the State Suicide Advisory Board, which, which all the state agencies and private sector agencies involved, and there is a state suicide prevention plan. So, so although we don't directly fund them, you know, but we certainly work with them to organize and coordinate what the activities are.
Right. And, and that answers it. And the only reason I ask is because, again, limited dollars. So just trying to see how efficient we can be with what we have and, excuse me, not leaving out any agency, any other agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Commissioner, does the committee feel okay about skipping number nine and circling back after you're able to look at, at the private provider contract? Only because that was what I suggested on the first, about the ARPA dollars, but. No? Yes? Okay, and number 10?
Okay, so for number 10, the question was information on technology being used for licensing. So the department uses Connecticut e-Licensing as a system to license upwards of 80 different occupational licensure categories. And this has been an enterprise system used by multiple different state agencies. We can renew licenses, initial and renewals through this system. And it's been a very efficient way for our agencies to operate. As somebody who has a medical license, I know that it's very easy to get through.
Are there any follow-up questions from the committee on that? Representative McCarty?
I'm just trying to keep this within the appropriations kind of arena and wondering, so the e-Licensing, does that system save the department? Are monies being saved? I'm sure with time management and everything, it probably helps the department quite a bit. But just curious as to whether you've seen any savings with the e-Licensing.
So e-Licensing has been in place for quite some time now. And so it would be historical to go back and see what the savings have been. As you mentioned, I'm sure there has been. And our practitioner, practitioner licensing expert is, has a family situation, so isn't on the call today. But we could probably look into historically what savings may have been accrued previously.
I, I don't want the department to go to extra work right now when you're trying to focus on what you're doing, but just curious as to whether there were savings. And I think you answered, there more than likely have been savings by using the licensing.
Thank you. Other questions from the committee? Number 11, tobacco. This has generated a lot of discussion.
Yeah, so this, it, just to frame this, the Tobacco Settlement Fund for the Tobacco and Health Trust Fund was reestablished in the last session. And in, in the past, the, the question that had been posed to us was, is 1 million of the 6 million in both fiscal year '24 and '25 from the Tobacco Settlement Fund of, for the Tobacco and Health Trust Fund being set aside by OPM and the Board for Local and Health Departments Tobacco Prevention Activities? So the answer is, it's not being set aside, but the 1 million from the general fund that was, has been proposed to be eliminated and 6 million proposed by the governor in fiscal year '24 and '25 is to be invested in the trust fund that will be administered by a board. I have appointed Deputy Commissioner Terranova, Jody Terranova, to be on that trust fund as our DPH representative. And per the statute, this particular fund is going to be used to support and encourage development of programs to reduce tobacco abuse through prevention, education, and cessation programs. Certainly would be impacted in local communities as well. And support and encourage the development of programs to reduce substance use and develop and implement programs to meet the unmet physical and mental health needs in the state. So I think that this is very broad. It's going to be used throughout the state. It's not specifically geared specifically to go to local health departments.
Yeah, I think the confusion, I don't know if the confusion came from us, but we, we added a million dollars to, into the rates for the, the allocation for the local health district. And then later, a year later, I believe, there was a sense that we hadn't really gone far enough and we should swing the big bat and, and set up a bigger fund. I think that was the thinking among some of our members. And, and it may have created an impression that there was backpedaling on the first, I think it was that there was overlap. Is, is that true, Rachel? I'm looking for Rachel, go picture. But yes, there you are.
Yes, I, so as the Commissioners stated, the mission of the Tobacco and Health Trust Fund is very broad by statute. So certainly the board can choose to focus money on tobacco cessation and prevention, and they have in the past. But they may also focus on many other types of projects as long as they meet the physical and mental health need, unmet, physical and mental health needs in the state. So it's important to note that the board will be making recommendations to the legislature that approves the awards that they're going to distribute. And those awards are not specifically for tobacco prevention for local and district health departments. And that's what the money was originally intended for. The funding has never been expended for that purpose. And so they are seeking, you know, the governor is seeking to eliminate that funding. But it's important not to confuse the two as it's not, you know, that $6 million for the Tobacco and Health Trust Fund is not a replacement for the specific purpose of that funding. Now it's included in the general fund.
When, when you said that the language that we wrote was very broad, would that in theory mean that if, if the board recommended it, we could be funding tobacco cessation in pregnant women?
Certainly, certainly. Or you could be treating opioid addiction. You could be researching cancer. There's really, there, it's really very broad under the statute, what the tobacco, because in that, the really important thing is it's Tobacco and Health Trust Fund, and that and health is kind of important because that indicates that that money under the trust fund can be used for really multiple purposes. So again, in the past, the board has always chosen to support cessation activities and prevention activities as a portion of what they do, but it's not necessarily guaranteed that all of that $6 million will be used for tobacco prevention and cessation. Because again, it goes to a board, the board makes decisions, and then the legislature approves them.
Thanks. Other questions on this? No? Do I see? No. Number 11 has generated a lot of conversations. The Healthcare Facility Quality Assurance.
Yes, so Healthcare Facility Quality Assurance and Performance Improvement Program is something that clearly in the pandemic is something we have identified is an intervention we, as the Department of Public Health, can do to improve quality and safety, particularly in nursing homes. So our facility licensing group at DPH licenses over 40 different provider types in terms of facilities. And nursing homes in particular have struggled with quality care initiatives. So this particular group would be able to more accurately monitor and track the types of complaints that the department gets and be able to follow through on quality improvement measures that could be put in place to maintain a quality standard in our nursing homes in the state.
Commissioner, would the, how would this be paid for? Does this, is this the one that assesses the nursing homes themselves?
So we have asked for three staff members as part of the Governor's Budget to set up this group within the Department of Public Health in terms of the personnel that would need to be funded. Lita, do you have any other comments in terms of funding other than the three personnel?
No, that, that, the, the Governor's Budget proposal is where this would get funded. I think the gist of this is, you know, one of the things that's true about the work that we do, we are the state survey agency for the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. And in that role, we collect a lot of data about our enforcement. And in that role, we collect a lot of data about our enforcement initiatives and about the complaints that we get around nursing homes. We're data rich, but we are, I would say, analysis poor. And what that means is that we need group to analyze the data that we're collecting that we give to CMS. CMS uses that data to track whether or not we're reporting timely to CMS, whether or not, you know, we are, are, you know, following up, you know, under their timeliness standards. What we'd like to do with the data is, you know, be able to analyze our enforcement and survey data to see if there are trends to answer questions like, are most of the citations or most of the violations we find are finding are around, let's say, infection control? And if that is the case, what kind of interventions can DPH do with the nursing home industry to help improve that? It would also be a way to assess whether or not our enforcement tools are working. Does it matter when we, you know, impose a fine on a nursing home is, does that change behavior? And if it doesn't, you know, what other intervention should we be using to help the facilities improve quality? We also want to make sure, we need, we need a place to analyze the status so we can also make sure that the state standards that you all have embraced in legislation and we have promulgated through regulation are effectively, you know, assessed and imposed on the obligations of the facilities are being met on the state standards as well as the federal standards. And so this is another place for us to look at data and make sure that we are capturing, you know, the whole of the standards that that facilities are required to meet. And then I think finally, one of the things that we'd like to use this data for is to help our sister agency, particularly the Department of Social Services, the Medicaid agency that funds, you know, I don't know, 70% of nursing home costs in the state, to make sure that what they are incentivizing, what they are doing as a payer, they've got a new acute aid based payment system, for example, that on the enforcement side that we're seeing, you know, those kinds of strategies, like what's happening with those strategies? If, for example, the facilities are, if DSS, one of the, one of the initiatives they had, for example, was to incentivize nursing homes to decrease the number of three and four bedrooms. Because during the pandemic, we certainly found that having three and four beds in a room, you know, was difficult in terms of managing infection control. So one question we might use the data for is to see, well, have the facilities done that? And when they've done that, has the, have we found fewer infection control citations? So I want to be able to take that kind of analytical.
We have four minutes for the rest of the, of the rest of the questions.
Appreciate that.
For the commissioners, so thank you. You all are making a big case, a strong case for the work that your department does. Thank you, Commissioner, tick-borne diseases.
I'll just briefly state, we have one state funded position for tick-borne diseases and two federal grants that you can see listed that help support that work.
Okay, any follow up questions on the tick-borne diseases? Okay, we have another minute or two. Number 14, the per capita subsidy.
So I think the question here was specifically around whether there was, you know, how was the increase? Would it address inflation? What I would just note is you can see that based on the Connecticut General Statute 19A-202, there was an increase in the amount that in terms of per capita for districts and departments, this would in part potentially address inflation, it may not completely, but that was, that increase was carried forward.
Are there any questions on the on the per capita grant? From the committee? Okay, moving to number 15.
And I believe this is our last listed question. This was regarding the 3.0 ratio of staffing ratio for nursing homes. And, you know, the last session, the session, the law that was passed, which asked for increasing, you know, forward facing time, clinical care time with patients specifically. When we determined how we could do that best in terms of that 3.0 ratio in terms of accomplishing the stated goal of patient care direct time, you can see that we did require this more on the part of CNAs, although there was an increase in the part of RNs. You can see a table that we provided, I can screen share that if you would like me to, which basically shows the amount of increase in time that we are specifically proposing. And what you can see, do you see my table of the old shift requirement and the new shift requirement? So you can see that, you know, for RNs, the increase has been about, you know, six minutes for 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, six minutes for 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 12 minutes overall increase. While for CNAs, the overall increase has been 27.6 minutes. And so you can see the overall percent increase, this is a direct total care time that a patient would see with a provider. So again, we did shift it more towards CNAs because they are the ones who do provide more of those direct care responsibilities, including toileting, bathing, dressing, and feeding. And that's how we accomplished that goal.
Sure, just a quick correction, the whole increase was 27.6 minutes and the CNA portion was 15 minutes, 15.6 minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you for the clarification, that's right. It's the 12 plus 15.6 gets to a total increase of 27.6.
Thank you, Commissioner, Senator Austin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Commissioner, did you figure out the dollar amount associated with this?
So again, I would defer to my OPM and DSS colleagues on that specific question. Does anybody else from our group want to comment further on that?
Because before we accept something like this, we have to know the dollar amount. So if you could work with your.
I would, I would ask OPM, I would ask OPM, who I believe is on the call as well, since really in terms of cost, that is, you know.
But if you pass a rule that, if, again, I want to go, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. If you pass a rule that is is relative to cost, we have to put the cost in the budget so that that's what this meeting is about, is cost and how it fits into appropriations. So seeing as many of the facilities that you're talking about get most of their dollars from the state, we need to make sure that we are putting in the correct dollar amount for the policy that you are considering implementing. And that that is, this is different than the policy that we voted on in relative to this and is making a significant cost increase for those folks. So if you could get, if you could please, if you could please, who is on here from OPM?
Hi, Senator Austin, this is Owen Root, the OPM Budget Analyst assigned to DPH.
Can you get us the cost, Owen, please, on this?
Sure, we're looking at this right now with the Department of Social Services. The FY 2223 biennium did add 500,000 in Medicaid state share of the cost associated with the minimum staffing ratio. And obviously with the legislation before the legislature this year, to increase the minimum staffing ratio, I think up to 4.1 hours. We are having ongoing conversations with DSS, so we assume that this will be something we'll be discussing throughout the session.
And when can you get us that cost? Because Representative Walker and I are working on the budget right now, along with our colleagues from appropriations. So we would need it in the next four days or so, is that possible?
I can circle back with Claudio and make sure that we get you the appropriate information.
Okay, we have our OFA analyst on right now, Emily Shepherd. And and Rachel's on also, but Emily's on, and Emily would, Emily, do you have any idea what the cost would be?
I'm actually working on, you're talking about moving this staffing ratio up to 4.1.
No, we're talking about what the commissioner has, Owen brought up the 4.1. We're talking about what the commissioner did relative to the staffing on what we did of the increase up to, up to three or having a standard of three. And she changed it around a little bit from the legislation. And we just want to know what the impact of her changes have made to the cost of the, or what we need to come up with.
I would like to just clarify that I did not change anything. DPH was charged with allocating the three hours. And our determination of that allocation was that the legislative intent was to provide more direct patient care. So we implemented what we were charged by the legislature to do with those three hours.
And that's, but that's not what the legislature said, so we can talk about that afterwards. I just want to get the dollars, that's what I need is the dollars. So Emily, back to you, can you look at what the commissioner did in her report to us relative to the assignment of how they came up with those charges and see what the cost may be for us?
Yep, yep, I have some information I can get you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Senator Austin, and you finished?
I am, thank you, thank you guys, thank you, Owen. If you want to send us yours so that we can get that done, that would be great, thanks so much.
Thank you.
We're going to have a lot of conversations about nursing homes, though I think there's a lot of concern about some of the facilities. Senator Mark?
Yeah, just, hi, everybody, thank you. When you're thinking about the cost, it's also the extra 10 minutes that clients gets turned every four hours to prevent a bed sore. And then when they get the very initial bed sore, the extra 10 minutes that you do wounds care to prevent it from going to a stage three or four bed sore. And the extra care with lifting a patient with assistance of two instead of assistance of one or having time to use a higher lift.
Yeah, we understand all this, Martha, we get it, we said that you're missing the point, we need to have the dollars so that we can put it into the budget. If we don't have the money.
I'm not missing the point, Senator Austin, my point is that when you're talking about the numbers, the numbers in preventable.
Doesn't matter, if we need, we need to get the dollars, Martha, thank you, we need to get the dollars. This is about finance and on these and appropriations on this, on this meeting. We need them to provide us with the dollars so that our providers are getting paid for the work that they're doing. That's what we need, that's what we're talking about now, we're not talking policy, we're just talking dollars and cents.
I'm talking dollars and preventative care, with all due respect, Senator Austin.
I understand that, I get what you're saying, but we need to get the dollars, thank you.
So before we act on this part of the, of the, what's before us, we're going to have to get more information from Emily. Are we agreed on that? And Emily and perhaps Rachel too, but we need a number, right? Okay, so Commissioner, I think we're done with your department. Well, we're not done with your department, but I think the one hour session, we're a little bit over. I really want to thank you and your and your people for for providing such a comprehensive response. The subcommittee really stepped up in opening up the material and and they really took it very seriously. And you really responded in kind and and we have a lot to look at, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I don't remember what we're supposed to call DeAndre Gifford now, is it Director?
I, I am, I am answering to any and all titles, Representative Dillon, Commissioner, Director. Doctor Deidre, so Director Gifford is fine, I appreciate you asking.
Okay. And would you like to go through your responses? I'm looking for the material here.
Yes, I, let me introduce, I just want to make sure that the rest of the team is on from OHS. Are you on Attila, Kim, and Kelly? We had this on our calendars for 11:15, so. I just want to make sure that the whole team.
Yeah, this, this Commissioner Sadi from DVA, we had our calendar for 1100 hours for the DVA, followed by Director Gifford.
Well then, with, with your, I apologize to Director Gifford and Commissioner Sadi, why don't you go first? And then we will go to that, I don't mean to be disrespectful to anyone.
Without objection, thank you, Representative. I just want to introduce, I can't see them all on the screen, but there's two, possibly three members of my staff that have joined me. If there are questions that I can't answer, they will be ready. Our fiscal managing officer, Ms. Brianna Mitchell, is in this meeting as well as our HR DAS business partner, Ms. Beth Ann Watts. And also, I believe, may have our staff attorney in here because she is also covering down. Since we do not have currently a legislative liaison, that position is vacant and currently posted. So our staff attorney has been filling that capacity, and that is Ms. Attorney Jane Segal. So thank you, Representative, I've submitted my written testimony. I've testified before many of you and other committees, as well as appropriation, human services, subcommittee meetings. And so I am available to answer any questions. We have submitted our budget for this year, for the biannual year. Our request is 26.9 million for the first year and 27.2 million for the second year. I believe that that is what is also included in the governor's budget. I did respond with regard to our headcount. At that time, it's always a point in time snapshot because that is a moving target. So I can answer questions with regard to our positions, our PS, our OE, and other pass through dollars. One thing to please keep in mind is that dollars for Easter Seals Veterans Rally Point as well as dollars for the Soldier Sailor and Marine Fund passed through the DVA. We do not expend nor have any control over those dollars, which are, I believe, in excess or around 1 million of that budget that is submitted. So please keep that in mind when looking at our budget and that those are pass through dollars only. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or comments, as are my staff. Back to you, Madam Chair.
The, I'm looking at your responses and I'm looking to, is Representative Mutra on the call? No? Okay, and the some of the concerns were about lapsing dollars and whether or not, do you have any carry forward, they were technical? And if I recall, there was an issue involving headstones.
So just to clarify, the headstones we do receive, so there are two headstone categories. One headstone category are the federal reimbursements that we receive for burial in our state veteran cemetery that go to the general fund. And that covers expenses at the cemetery. The Headstone Fund covers the reimbursement for the installation of community based veterans' headstones, which we have increased by, I believe, 75% over the last two or three years. I'll defer to Ms. Mitchell details on that. So that is, again, one of those moving targets because there are a different number of burials year to year and a different number of applications for that reimbursement. That goes to families or to the headstone providers to offset the cost for veteran headstones outside of our state veteran cemetery. Those are for community based headstone installations for veterans. And so Ms. Mitchell, is there anything that you think should be added to that to ensure the committee understands the process as well as the fluctuating dollars, so sometimes there is a lapsing amount? But I would caution reducing that because we can't gauge the number year to year, but we do see an increase of our demographic, especially last. Ms. Mitchell, I believe you're still on mute?
Okay, there you go. Hello, everyone, Commissioner, you're correct in your statements regarding how that target moves from, really it moves from depending on what the season is. We have some fluctuation in our internments and those headstone installations. But it's, it's a good number. And you're right on target, thank you.
Well, there was a lot of concern among some of our members that we'd be respectful, and of course you are. But we want, we wanted to make sure that that the legislature is, is providing. that the legislature is is providing you what you need. And I think that was where the a lot, there were a lot of questions that came, at least to me, from outside the committee.
Yes, and that's a very good point. There actually are two lines of effort that ensure that we have both appropriate and timely headstone installation at our state veteran cemeteries, as well as the reimbursement process for community-based cemetery burials of veterans. So those are two different areas. In our state veteran cemetery, with the support of the administration, we have increased our staffing on grounds. We were down to three full-time people there. We now have five with another person that can go from our campus to the cemetery. So nearly doubled our staff at the state veteran cemetery and taken on more the responsibility of installation and maintenance. We do also contract out some of the installation as well. Some of those dollars come out of that headstone line item. We at one time, I will tell you, when I first became Commissioner, we were behind close to 200 headstones of installation. We now are keeping up with that week by week. At any one time, we may have five, 10, or 15 because we receive them all at one time from the feds. And so we then have to install them. But we have caught up, both because we have the available funds and because we've received approval over the last several years to expand the state cemetery staff. On the other part, the reimbursement that goes to community-based burials for those families, again, we've increased. I think it was at $75 just a half dozen years ago. We went to 100, 125. And Ms. Mitchell, you can shake your head or give me a thumbs up. Are we 125 or is it 150? Thumbs up for 150. $150 reimbursement. So we have significantly increased that at the request of veterans and funeral directors because of the cost, the increased cost of installation. It's not intended to pay for the stone fully. It's intended to help offset the cost of installation. So in six years, we doubled that. And we're also able to process those applications more efficiently because we have two full-time cemetery memorial staff people. At one time, we were down to one and one part-timer. Sorry for the long answer, but I want to make sure I covered all of that.
Thank you. If if you're not getting what you need, we need to know that.
We're getting what we need for those two things.
Right, okay. Senator, Representative Nolan, the Chair of the Veterans Committee. Next question? Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I my questions were actually answered in regards to the staffing that you just talked about. So I'm glad that you have that extra staff. And I was concerned in regards to the burial expense because I know we've been unfortunately having more people passed. So I just wanted to make sure that that fund was up to par and that you weren't you know, just going along with with, you know, respecting the governor. But sometimes we we bend for the governor to make sure that he can do his budget the way he needs to. But I just want to make sure that at any time, as a co-chair along with Senator Marks, that we can help you. Please let us know because we know how important it is to make sure that our veterans are taken care of. And and that we don't go without putting enough funding in there. And I know the same for Senator Austin. She is very a big champion for veterans too. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Are there other questions for the Commissioner?
Representative Dillon, I'm not sure whether this question was asked, but since the Commissioner is here, thank you. If he could just comment perhaps about the veterans' health care right now? And does he see any need for any additional services in that regard? I know it's a big piece, so I'm just curious as to how that is is working at this time.
Thank you, Representative, for the question. And I always have to begin this with explaining just a little bit. And I apologize, some of you already know this, some may not. We oftentimes have veterans and their family members that don't understand this. The state DVA versus the federal VA. So the federal VA provides outpatient services in Woods Newington and also CBOC, Community-Based Clinics, as well as inpatient and longer-term care out of the West Haven VA campus. That is the federal VA healthcare system, of which nearly 60,000 of our Connecticut veterans are active, not only enrolled in. Enrollment is different, but actively receiving their care from there. That is the primary and inpatient care. What we provide at the state DVA, different from VA, is skilled nursing care on our campus, which is long-term inpatient skilled nursing care, as well as our residential program and for individual veterans, family housing, veterans, their spouse, and our minor children. So I the federal VA healthcare system, I can't speak to what their concerns or needs are. I can speak to what our veterans say and what the community says is that generally, the federal VA healthcare system we partner with in co-managed care is operating very well in Connecticut. They're in an interim situation, waiting for a new full-time director to come in, but has gone well. They are expanding mental health as well as services related to women veterans. In fact, I have a meeting coming up. We had initially, we have other meetings coming up with federal VA, how we can better partner state DVA and VA with outreach to women veterans and focusing on their needs, which at times can be very different than male veterans, particularly because we see more female veterans who are head of household than male veterans when it's a single-parent home, as well as then the mental health needs for their children. So federal VA does tend to provide some of that. If they are active duty, then the DoD covers that through TRICARE. For our healthcare center, what we are looking at is the numbers that we'll have to follow once those are decided on the hours of care. We do provide from CNA to RN to LPN direct care. We also have primary care physicians and a physician health director through an MOU with UConn at our skilled nursing facility. We just have gone through several inspections. We do very well, you know, a couple of deficiencies we're addressing, but none more health, safety, or welfare deficiencies. There are more some admin items that we are addressing. And we are currently at about a 70 to 75% capacity. So we do have beds and we do have beds available. And as the beds are filled and we have more veterans with us, one thing we will need to do is start to fill some of those vacancies, which are currently on a temporary hold based on our census. So that's another thing, probably jumping into a question others may ask. So what we do see, though, is getting the word out to veterans and family members of what's available, what's available through the state DVA and the federal VA. We do have a mental health program in partnership with Demus that we host on our campus for our veteran residents and also for community-based veterans and members of the National Guard. And that is new over the past couple of years through this MOU with Demus that does not cost either agency any additional dollars. We pool our resources, we pool our logistics, and we've expanded that because mental health services, and when I say veteran, I generally also include anyone who is currently also serving in Connecticut, who may be eligible for some of these services. We've expanded it to that, particularly members of our National Guard. I hope that answers your question, Representative.
Yes, it does. And it gives us a good overview of what kind of services our veterans are receiving. The last one was, if you want, and I hope I'm not out of order here with the committee, but just to talk about the respite care program and what what we offer our veterans in that aspect.
So we have by statute the ability to offer a couple of beds up to 28 days a year, free respite care at our state veteran skilled nursing facility. And for anyone who doesn't know what respite is, this is not hospice. This is not end-of-life respite care. I know the clinicians know this, they're shaking their heads yes, so that's wonderful, is to give families a respite who are caring for someone at home, and they can then come to our facility for up to 28 days. We do have a minimum. We don't have one day or two day because there's a processing time and some acclimation, and it's usually longer than that, up to 28 days per calendar year at no charge. Oftentimes, those individuals who come to us through the respite care end up applying to be admitted as full patients in our skilled nursing facility. So we do have the respite care program. It was temporarily suspended at the height of the pandemic simply because we couldn't process people. And it didn't make sense that people coming in and out of the facility that way. But it is in place now, and we are able to have them because we do have beds available.
Great, that's good news. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate the extra information. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Representative.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Fontello, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't, but I will thank the Commissioner for all of his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Great. Okay, it sounds like we're done. Oh, no, whoop. Senator Marks?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just through you as co-chair with Rep. Nolan of the Veterans and Military Affairs Commission. I just want to thank you, Commissioner. I have heard the veterans' budget now. I think this might be like my sixth time. So I don't want you to think I don't have any questions. My questions have been answered numerous times. And I thank you for all you do and for your due diligence. You're always there answering our questions and giving us very good facts. So thank you so much, sir.
Thank you so much, Senator, for that compliment of the team. It's really a team effort and for your service as co-chairperson of the committee.
And if you could off-line to the committee and provide more information about your partnership with Demus. That sounds terrific.
Yeah, so I think Counsel's on here or Ms. Mitchell, others, make a note. I'll make a note here. We do have, we'll look at that MOU and get over a copy of that and any other explanatory documentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are we done? Any other questions? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for your service.
Director Gifford, are you prepared to present?
Good morning, Representative Dillon and members of the committee. I am here. I just want to confirm that my team is on. I see Sumit Sachnani, our Health Information Technology Officer, Kelly Cinco, our Director of Innovation, Kimberly Martone, our Chief of Staff, and Atala Brown Tree, our Director of Finance. So as a new-ish director, I will be relying on this veteran team, although Atala is almost as new as me, but she's a quick study. I'll be relying on this veteran team for backup support. Representative, we have submitted both our testimony on the overall budget and the responses to the committee's questions. As you know, Governor Lamont proposed an OHS budget of $18.7 million for fiscal year 2024. There were a number of changes in the budget articulated in our testimony, and we have responded to your questions. So I think I would just offer that anything that has not been responded to in our written answers, we'd be happy to provide further information, whether it's about our positions filled or any of our programmatic changes. One thing I would just point out for the committee is that we are in the process of transitioning the Covered Connecticut program from the Office of Health Strategy over to the Department of Social Services. As you all know, this is a new program providing no out-of-pocket cost coverage for certain people who qualify on our excellent health and health insurance exchange, Covered Connecticut. This is a partnership between the federal and state government as we are getting Medicaid reimbursement for those out-of-pocket costs, even though the main insurance product is from the exchange. So since it is under the Medicaid program, we all felt it was appropriate to transfer that program back to DSS. So we're in the process of doing that, and some of the questions pertain to the Covered Connecticut program. So with that, I'll pass it back to you, Representative Dillon.
I guess we had had a back and forth about your data collection and about China. And I'll just set that aside for a minute. The it seemed like the the primary issue, although there it's up to the subcommittee, was the justification for 11 new positions, which looked like a lot.
Yes, so it is an increase for us. So let me just start a little bit and then ask the team to join in. So the the new positions pertain in large part to the governor's proposal around limiting out-of-network costs, which is in contained in Senate Bill 983. So in order to make that an effective program, what that would do is limit the amount that providers could charge someone who sees them, and they're not an in-network provider. We know that oftentimes, these charges for out-of-network services can be very, very high. So the proposal is to cap it right now at 150% of Medicare. But the only way to ensure that that cap is actually being implemented and enforced is for us to do some level of audits and have some ability to actually impose penalties if individuals are exceeding that cap. So five of the proposed positions pertain to that. There are three new positions to support the implementation of the recommendations of the five-year State IT Plan. As you know, that's a plan that asks OHS to support the All-Payer Claims Database, the Health Information Exchange, and the improvement of information technology coordination across and between state agencies. We have been doing that work with very, very limited staff, primarily Sumit and some borrowed time from other individuals at OHS. And it's a large body of very important work. And so that was for those positions. We have two new positions to enhance our agency data analytic capacity. The the agency receives, to your point earlier about the hospital data representative, the agency receives large amounts of very important information, particularly around hospitals, but also around now with our All-Payer Claims Database, around what's being paid for services. And we need the expertise in order to make that data available and useful to the people of Connecticut and to policymakers. We need individuals with the skills and abilities to do the analysis and change that data into actual usable information. And finally, there is one new position to support our certificate of need program in monitoring compliance. As you know, we review several dozen certificate of need applications every year. Some of those applications result in an agreed-upon settlement that comes with conditions. And OHS, up until this time, has not had the staff to monitor compliance with those conditions, agreed-upon conditions. So that was the impetus for that additional position.
So that would include a potential closure of services as well as opening. Is that true?
That is in the certificate of need statute, Representative. You are correct. That with certain discontinuation of certain services, a certificate of need is required.
So that some of the issues involved with, let's say, statewide availability availability of maternity care and potential closures going on, that would be before your agency?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there other questions from the members concerning the Office of Health Strategy? Do you, Senator Gordon?
Yes, thank you. I appreciated Representative Dillon. And thank you, Dr. Gifford, for the presentation. I have a question about the quote-unquote Health Information Exchange. Why is it that the governor's budget is proposing around $3 million? This Health Information Exchange, which isn't really fully operational, and we actually have a fully operational private health information exchange called CT Health Link that actually dovetails with multiple states that's not using any taxpayer money. Why is this being requested for around 3 million in the biennial budget proposal? I thought that there was going to be at some point, this which is called Connie is going to start becoming on its own sustainability path, which I have yet to actually see or get any answers as to what is that sustainability? which I have yet to actually see or get any answers as to what is that sustainability plan? I have asked and I eagerly await. I do appreciate answers to some of my questions that your office provided, but CONI has yet to respond to any of mine. So, I just ask that because $3 million is a lot of money for a project that has been going on in various formats and using millions of federal money unsuccessfully for years and why we're being asked to use more state money for it and compete with an already existing and successful private health information exchange? Thank you.
So, your question, Senator, I know there's more than one question in there.
Yeah, my question is why the $3 million being proposed? What is that money really going to be used for? And where's the sustainability with this project that has yet to really do anything truly successful? I'm just a little puzzled by what the $3 million is really going to do and what is it then going to set the stage for? Are we going to be looking for more and more money every single year for it? I haven't gotten my answers fully answered when I sent queries by letter. So, I appreciate a response as to the $3 million request in the budget, at least the budget proposal.
Thank you, Senator.
Do I have to go, Gifford?
Yes, thank you, Representative and Senator. Happy to respond and we do appreciate and understand the reasons for your inquiries. So, as you know, we have requested some state support for the ongoing operations of CONI. As you also correctly note, the majority of the funding for CONI continues to be provided through a joint agreement with our federal partners. CONI would be the only statewide health information exchange. And I will let Sumit comment on your questions about the other existing exchanges. But as you know, Senator, from your own work, it's difficult often to get information between healthcare systems, some of which may operate their own private exchanges. But the really critical difference is that CONI intends to build on the existence of these proprietary exchanges in order to make sure that no matter where a person is seeking care, no matter what provider they are seeing, that there's a standard source of information that the provider can have access to, to avoid duplications in services, to avoid medication errors, to avoid lack of care coordination, which we all know our system is plagued with. So, in states where a statewide health information exchange is operational, they have seen value from, for example, alerting providers when an individual is admitted or discharged from a hospital or other type of facility. They've seen benefits around med reconciliation, et cetera. So, that is the justification for the statewide health information exchange. And all that being said, we agree that CONI needs to get on a path to sustainability. And Sumit, as the board chair, is working with the board and the staff of CONI to ensure that such a plan is developed and implemented. And I would ask Sumit if you had anything to add to my comments to the Senator's question.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford, and thank you, Senator, for asking that important question on the distinction between CONI versus some of the other successful HIES in this state. As you probably know, CONI is statutorily driven. It has 11 specific goals by statute that it needs to accomplish, which includes providing certain services at no charge. For example, a patient access to their complete medical record, which is unique for the official statewide HIE versus some of the other HIES in the state. What the approach that we're taking with CONI is truly make it a statewide entity, meaning all healthcare providers in the state. It doesn't matter as a resident which provider you're going to see, which system you're going to. You should have access to care coordination through a unified HIE. So, the requirements that the statute lays out for CONI are a little bit different and expansive than some of the other private HIES where there is an option for people who are willing to pay for that HIE to get membership into that HIE and participation would pay for that and be able to get access to it, versus in case of CONI, it truly is all licensed healthcare providers in the state of Connecticut. I would also say, in terms of the sustainability, there is a sustainability plan for CONI. Again, it is in its early phases of building that critical mass, meaning we are asking all providers, and we had a two-year goal based on statute to accomplish the connection of the providers. The first year was focused on getting all of the hospitals and labs connected to the HIE. And this second year is focused on all other providers. So, as it's building this critical mass, it is developing services. And right now, all of the services that CONI is offering are free of charge. But there will be, for its sustainability, marginal allowable fee for services, which is what will lead to its sustainability. So, there is a sustainability plan in place that the board has approved, and that is what CONI is building towards.
Well, thank you for answering my questions. And I'll just say, I look forward to you replying to the letter that I sent where I had more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And I wonder, Mr. Donnie, if could you reduce part of your response to the committee? I realize, I'm sure you've testified elsewhere on this matter, but it would be very helpful if you could provide that response in writing to our committee administrators so that the people who are actually putting the money together for what you all want to do will have the same information that's been available to other committees. And thank you very much, Senator Gordon, for that very, very helpful question. Although there were more than one question in there, but I'm going to focus on that one part about the duplication and sustainability. If that would be fine with you, I think it would be helpful to those of us who are working on the budget.
Happy to do that, Representative.
Thank you, oh, thank you, I'm sorry, yes, whoever, right, okay. And I believe the number I was given was three or four days to get numbers on all these things. So, Representative Walker.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And I agree with you. I was just going to sort of grab Senator Gordon to ask if his letter could be given to Madam Administrator so that she could send it and then we could all get the responses back so that we would be able to understand. Because I appreciate the questions because it brought me a lot more questions in what I'm trying to understand is the role of the Office of Health Strategy. So, what I was going to ask, I know this is really kind of lateening, but I'd like an organizational chart to see who is going where and where things might have changed. Because in trying to go through your budget, first of all, I noticed the expansion of the insurance fund with staffing and what the role of those positions are going to be. Trying to understand going from the Office of Healthcare Strategy to Office of Health Strategy, what are the things that are being maintained as far as the roles? And what are the things that are not being maintained and what has been expanded? Because I'm confused in what was and what will be under the Health Strategy Board in this. This is not my wheelhouse, so I don't understand it very well. And that's what I'm sort of trying to get more information on, okay? Is that possible?
Yes, Representative, with your permission, I could take just a minute or two now to try to address some of your question. And then we'd be happy to send you an organizational chart of the Office of Health Strategy. Not a problem. So, the Office of Health Strategy, our name is not changing. It has been the Office of Health Strategy since it was...
I thought it was the Office of Healthcare Strategy.
I don't think it's ever been called that. Kim, you should correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have always been the Office of Health Strategy since it was put into place by you all in 2018.
I'm sure Gifford, I think she may be referring to the Office of Healthcare Access, which came and became the health systems planning unit. That might be.
That was the, thank you, Kelly. That was the unit at the Department of Health, Representative, the Office of Healthcare Access. Let's just forget about it. It got moved over to be part of our agency now, Office of Health Strategy. So, that's its former name when it was at DPH. And then it got moved as, and now it's a unit of the Office of Health Strategy. The new positions would all be at the Office of Health Strategy. They're all of the positions that we requested would be part of our agency. The Health Information Exchange is an independent, non-state organization for which we by statute have, quote, administrative oversight and which by statute, the Health Information Technology Officer is the chairman of the board. So, that's the connection, the relationship between those two organizations.
Okay, okay. So, then I guess the other question means you had transferred technology positions of support from the IT to DAS. But then you bring back three into a health IT plan, statewide health IT plan. So, you're sending two and bringing in three. And the role of your five-year health IT plan, that's the part that I'd like to know more about because what we were told last year was that all IT was going to be in DAS. And so, now the next year, oh, no, 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 we're not doing that. We're going to split it up here and split it up there. So, it's next year, I'm dying to see what it's going to be next year because it's going to be, well, everybody's going to get IT for, you know, Christmas. They'll get IT, they'll get IT neither. So, that's what I'd like to kind of understand a little bit more.
Yeah, fair question, Representative. And I think if we break it into two parts, part one being the positions in bits and then part two being the state health IT plan. I will start with sort of a global statement, which is the bits positions, the two that you referred to around health IT are for operations of the information technology of the state. So, the things that help the agencies run and that we do our business, our computing systems, our servers, our laptops, all of the websites, all of that is the bits work and that is the health IT that supports the operations of the state. The work that's under Sumit and is in our statute around health information technology deals with the environment, the health information technology environment statewide. So, we in fact have an obligation and it's really kind of more of a policy, an advisory body, which has come up with this plan. And so, your question is extremely valid and understandable. But I think the best way to think about it is the bits work is operations of the state IT business. The work that's by statute in our agency has to do with the health information technology systematically across the state.
Okay. I think I understand.
We still need something in writing.
Yeah, I need to have something to sort of be able to reflect on, if that's possible.
Absolutely. And of course, we, Sumit is the expert on this and we would always be happy to have any kind of follow-up calls or further conversations to explain.
I think it's moving the pieces and understanding what the pieces are going to be doing that for a fiscal approach, that's what we're trying to understand. And so, it would be helpful if we had something in writing so that, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. No, you're not a commissioner anymore? Are you a commissioner?
At the moment, Executive Director.
Okay, thank you, Executive Director.
You're welcome.
Thank you, bye.
Are there other questions of Director Gifford? Are we done?
If I may just make a quick, just only a comment. I just wanted to thank the Executive Director for breaking out the cost growth benchmarks, where you're going, what's being used in that. Because I think that was originally part of the goal of the office, right? To see what we can do and where our needs are most prominent. So, I just wanted to thank you for giving me a better idea of where the benchmarks are going. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Chair, if I could just also add that in our written submission, we did respond to Representative Nolan at our appropriations hearing. The first hearing had a number of questions about the work OHS was doing in the area of health equity. So, the team put together, Representative, for you, what I think is a really nice summary of a number of different programs and projects in our responses to the questions. So, if you are able to have a look at that and if you have any additional questions, of course, feel free to follow up with us. It's important work and work that we are proud of doing.
Thank you. And I was saying before you were here, I don't know that one of the exciting things, I think a lot of the members, especially those who are new to the subcommittee, have really opened up the material in very important ways. And that also means that it put a little bit of pressure on the departments to come up with a lot of information. And now in turn, we have to read it all and make sense of it. It's new to us, even if we've been following the migration of that agency since it was the Office of Healthcare Access. That in itself is kind of an interesting tale of healthcare reform in Connecticut. But that's a whole other story. So, it is important that whatever we say here, and that's why what your response was very helpful, be reduced to writing whenever possible so that all of the decision-makers will be able to reflect on it, especially those who cannot always be here because they have more responsibilities. But even if you're here, there's a lot to keep track of. And Representative Nolan, did you want to follow up on the questions you had asked and the responses that we had before?
I think I'm going to look them over and then connect with Commissioner Director Gilver as soon as I take a look at them. But Commissioner, please send them to our administrators so everybody can take a look at some of those things so that we can all see them. But I do appreciate you putting that together and I look forward to having some conversation in regards to it.
Will do.
Thank you. And Sumit, I assume is going to prepare himself for a lot of questions as well with Gifford. So, it's all good. Are there any other questions for the Director? No? No, Representative, I'm telling, no? Okay, okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you and thanks to the OHS team for the prep. Nice to see you all.